I'd like to call the order of the Plan Commission for the Town of East Troy for the month of July. I'd like the record to show that all the commissioners are present. How we operate is we operate on a split meeting format. This is our informational meeting where we will gather all the information. We'll ask questions and then we'll convene for two weeks, come back in two weeks and make our decision. Now that being said, that's not by ordinance, so if we feel it's a straightforward decision, we'll make that decision tonight. So basically how we're going to operate tonight is we're going to call the agenda item. Have whoever, you know, come up, give a little presentation, let us know what you're looking for. At that point, the commissioners will ask some questions of the presenter. And then we will have a small discussion amongst ourselves, then we'll open it up to the audience. If anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor of the proposal. Then if anybody would like to speak against the proposal. And then if necessary, a short rebuttal from the applicant. The first item in the agenda is to review and approve the meeting minutes from June 7th. Did we have any issues with 7th or with June 7th?
I can make a motion to approve the...
We have a motion to approve and we have a second from Jerry.
And then some corrections that I noted. Earlier today, commissioners, I did call Jen and pointed them out to her. So on page one, variance number three are cut and paste ahead of us. So the people actually are the DUDOCs. I'm in Maria and I think Jen's already made that note. I would suggest some language changes on page two, if possible. And I would put in front of Department of Agriculture, Trains and Protection, Wisconsin, WI. And I would delete before getting evaluated by FDA. Because there's no relationship here between USDA and FDA. So that's not really a correct statement. I also noted the A2, it should be A4. And I asked Jen to just state the reference under section 74-61. That it is the Walworth County zoning ordinances. The outlining got ahead of us, so the variance number, the next variance is number four. And then I asked Jen to consider, or us to consider, in the second sentence where they're talking about the 63-foot location. That is of the proposed new residence, including an attached patio and screen porch, period. Delete "and" and then say the applicants requested, also requested variances. Again, ask Jen to identify the source of 74-174. And autocorrect got away from us there on itself, itself. And those I would suggest as corrections to the minutes as proposed.
Would you like to approve them as corrected or wait till we get a corrected draft?
I think, I'm fine with approving it as corrected.
Okay. Do you want to just update your motion, Paul, to approve as corrected?
Motion to approve the minutes from June 7th as corrected.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Bill. Next item on the agenda is a land separation slash CSM at W2251 St. Peters Road. Parcel PA 16960002. Steve and Patricia Lamberts.
So I think you have all the information as far as the property location. And it is a 15-acre parcel. And I did do a survey and I don't know if you had a chance to drive by and see the state where it is marked. So that would leave approximately a 10-acre parcel and a 5-acre parcel, which I believe is the minimum for the town for land separation. Not sure what other information you need from me, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just wonder why in R2 instead of keeping C2.
Well, I wanted C2, right? But suppose in the town, it says you have to have 330 feet of frontage. Well, I can't, it's not physically possible to do that. That was the only reason that I went to the R2.
So Steve and I actually talked, it's not, it's not that we're trying, he was trying to pull a fast one, get a, you know, subdivision in here. That was the best way we felt. It's still, you know, obviously R2 is not, has a lower minimum than five acres, but he's still proposing five acres, which is temporary.
I had similar questions, look at R1 here.
Right, right.
Which is it?
Now, you can, for the C2, I think you can go down to 200 foot width with the conditional use through the county.
Oh, I just read the county.
But that was a fact I had because, you know, R1 is a little bit more restrictive. Except that, you know, C2 is also larger accessory structure, that sort of.
I would rather have C2, but I read that county had said 330, I didn't know you could petition to try to get it.
So you can go down to 200 feet. I had to do that years ago myself, so you can, so that's an option.
With, with the conditional use?
Yeah, otherwise you could just go for an approval of an R1, is that what you're saying?
It is R1.
Correct.
I'm sure. And are you confident with, it's your child who's going to build this setback, sorry, you got the space?
Not a problem. Yeah, I guess I'd like to hear from you guys your thoughts on R1 versus C2.
Should look at the zoning regs, the setbacks are different. C2, you can get a, I mean, you could have horses and bulls, that sort of thing.
Right. And the R1, you could still have an accessory building, like a detached garage?
There's different specs on all that.
Well, how likely is that in the county history? If they approve that kind of thing regularly?
Well, if you have an accessory building that's within the R1 regs, you just have to get a building permit.
I mean, the exception to the 330 rule.
Oh.
Down to 230 is basically what I've got. How does the county, I mean, is that pretty typical that they would approve that?
It's hard to say. I'm fine, no, that's what worries me, right? I'm fine with the R1 and if there's a little more restrictive, then it's a little more restrictive.
You can have an accessory building, I mean, again, it's setbacks, it's, again, it's up to you, I guess.
They have no intention of having horses or anything like that, but to have a detached garage or something would probably be something they would look at in the future.
Detached garage wouldn't be an issue.
And I would probably stay with the R1 designation.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Did you check the setbacks on lot 1? Looks like there's a garage there with relation to that, you know, when you draw, when you create carve-out lot 2, that side yard setback.
It's with the, I think the county has, I told them, let's double that, just so we don't have an issue. I mean, if you'd rather the lot not be five acres, if you'd rather do it three acres.
Side is minimum 20 and you've got 50.
So just to be clear, you're not looking for any, any conditional uses or anything around setbacks?
No.
Strictly a land division?
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thanks. I guess my opinion, it's a conforming R1, it's a conforming C2 remaining. Setbacks on the remaining lot are good. Any other discussion amongst commissioners? Then I would open it up to the audience, would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? All right. This to me is pretty straightforward, I'd take a motion if anyone's willing.
A motion to approve the plan division for against PTA 16960002.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So Joe, does it go to the county then?
It does. So we ask to go to the town board with our recommendation, they sign off on it and then it goes to the county.
We meet on Monday.
Right.
And then how does that get back to right to the county?
We send it to the county. It doesn't go necessarily to you. The town board sends the notice direct to the county. Yep. Next item on the agenda is a lot line adjustment at N 9020 and N 9024 Austin Road. Parcel PET 700010E, PET 700019, Duris LLC.
It's a one-person LLC, which is me. What I'm, what I'm asking for is there are two lots there now. One is large and one is small. And the larger lot has a small dwelling on it that was gutted several years ago because of the owners at the time had a water pipe break, they didn't know it, and the whole thing filled it up with mold. So to remediate that, they totally gutted it and cured the mold problem. So it's been standing there gutted since then. It's too small to be a practical house. It was a cottage at one point in time. My, my problem that I'm trying to solve is the smaller lot has the larger dwelling on it that's in much better shape. It has a sandpoint well. The drilled well is on the other side of the small house on the larger lot. So I have a problem with, with water. I want to get that well connected to the larger house. I'd like to convert the smaller house to a garage because there virtually is no parking for the larger house now. All there is is parking across the road for that. There's just no way to put parking there. So what I had the surveyor do is I said, I want to keep the lot sizes relatively the same as they are. Just have all of the improvements on, on one lot so that it's a much more practical property. And so you can see, he paralleled the new lot line to the existing lot line in between the two dwellings. And created a proposed vacant lot that is roughly the same as, as where 920 is. So then I included, I thought it'd be helpful to have an aerial, I included an aerial of it so you can get kind of visual of what, what the area looks like and where things are relative to the road easier than looking at a survey map.
Sure.
So, oh, and in addition, I am planning on taking out the two structures that are down on the channel. One of them is an old boathouse. It's in really bad shape. That's going to come out. The other one was the building that they had a sandpoint well in years ago. No need to have either one of those down on the channel, they're coming out.
Good. So my initial concern is parcel two that you're leaving is 12,000 square feet. And that would be non-conforming to R1 zoning. Is there any leeway in that, in that lot line adjustment so we wouldn't have to, so that wouldn't be an issue that would be in front of us?
Well, I've, I've got room to move it within the allowed distance from the well. That's, that's the wheelroom that I've got, I don't know that. What's the minimum for an R1?
20,000 square feet.
Oh, man, that would be halfway through the, through the house.
Well, you've got 12,000 there, so you'd have to move it, whatever the width of that is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
80 feet, so 8,000 feet, you'd have to move it 100 feet, yeah.
That puts it in the house.
Yeah, right. Okay. Anything else that you want to bring up?
It's pretty straightforward. I want to have a well and a garage, so I've got places to put cars and a better source of water for the property.
Go ahead.
Is this the line for the separation?
That's the proposed line.
Okay, got it. So my, my problem is, I'm glad you talked about the mold, creating two residents on a single property.
That's why, that's why I never intend to have that, they're too close together to be out. I mean, they're only like 30 feet apart. So from a practical standpoint, I, I do not want those two houses close together. And given the size of the smaller house, the part that has a crawl space under it is 20 feet wide by 28 feet deep. It's a, it's a perfect size for, for a garage with a small workshop off from it and the little addition that's on it.
Have you talked to the building inspector yet about your parking needs, the garage needs, the well connection?
You're talking about Vince? I talked to Vince and he didn't really have much information for me. I also have talked to Darren down at the county before I did any of this. And, and I showed him what I was thinking about doing and he thought that based on what, what he saw, it would be something that could be doable.
So Bill and I talked earlier today and I guess I agree with him. If, if we were to approve this tonight, we basically gave you two houses on R1 lot. And that's, that's the concern that we have.
Right.
You know, your intentions are to make it into a garage, but if you never do, now we...
Is it possible for you to make the approval conditional on the thing being converted to a garage in a reasonable period of time or something?
We've, we've been burned in the past. That's my only apprehension. And we really have no enforcement because we're under county zoning and the county's not great in enforcement. That's at least my apprehension, I don't want to speak for everybody else here, so. So as proposed, we would, we would have a non-conforming R1 remaining and we'd have a non-conforming R1 with two dwellings on it. As proposed.
So, yeah. Well, I'm concerned about the non-conforming R1 too, because it creates a problem down the road. Some, sooner or later, some years from now, someone's going to come and want to build on a, the non-conforming one. So if the goal is to get access to the well, would you consider merging the two lots? Combining them entirely?
As a last resort, I'd just as soon not do that because I, I'd rather see if I can figure out a way to get 20,000 feet before I, before I did that.
Sure.
Just from a practical standpoint, it's better to have.
Two lots.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, I, I'm willing to go back and see if I can figure out a way to get 20,000 square feet.
Sure.
That lot, that lot line could angle the other way.
Yeah, right.
I can, I can get creative.
But, but the, so there is a well there, that's not a sandpoint well?
No, there's a drilled well there.
Okay. Because I thought if you were going to put in a new well to get rid of the point, but it's existing.
No, that'd be an easier problem.
Sure, sure, understood, understood. Go ahead, Bill, if you had more.
Structurally, the garage, it withstood the mold, the woods, your structure?
Yeah, it is, structurally it's solid. It's just, it's, it's gutted and it's got a floor space, that's, that's a crawl space underneath. You know, it's 20 feet by 28, that's a pretty small footprint for a house.
But a crawl space still would have wood joists over it, I don't know that I'd want to have my car on it. Okay.
Take that all out, pour concrete.
Got it.
I've got really good head clearance, I mean, it's ideal for a garage.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? I, I think this might be something we could table and maybe you could come back with another proposal.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Give me one second, I apologize. Next item on the agenda is conditional use, 94, sorry. 9402 Stone School Road. Parcel number PA 30680004, Dean and Amy. I'm going to just butcher it, I'm just going to leave it.
So we are applying for the conditional use for Hobby Farm. The way our land is set up, the side yard setback that is currently required is 100 feet, which puts the proposed barn that we would be building within about 65 to 70 feet of that place. And then we also have quite a bit of elevation change on our property, a lot of rolling hills. And when we had our builder out to shoot elevations, we found that we had anywhere from 2 and 1/2 feet on up where we would have differences in elevation from one end of the barn to the other. His concern about that, in addition to the fact that it would really increase the cost of the build, is with the barn being that close to the house, it would create water drainage issues. We are quite a distance from our closest neighbors. We're agricultural all around us, we're the only C2 in the area. So we did get statements from both of our neighbors who said that they do not have issues with us getting the conditional use for the Hobby Farm. Drawings are in there on the barn.
So my question is, are, I mean, it says on the application you're going for a conditional use, but are you going for a variance on setback as well?
No, just the conditional use Hobby Farm. So we met with Darren through Walworth County. And ours would meet the qualifications for that because it is going to be a barn that houses livestock, which is why we have that setback requirement. If it was just a regular storage barn, I believe it would only be the 35. So because of that, we're looking to go with the Hobby Farm. He said variance would probably not qualify because there were three qualifications we had to meet for the variance. So his recommendation was the Hobby Farm, he said it's fairly new and we may be actually the first ones to use it. But we are looking to have a couple of horses and some goats and things in there.
Okay. Other, any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
So a lot of pictures here and arrows and things, so your lot applies the railroad?
Yes, yep.
So it's that triangular?
Correct, correct. And the drop points, we use my son's hunting app actually. So it's a drop point from where our proposed barn would be to our nearest neighbors. And then there's also a drop point in there, I believe from, it shows you how close it would be to our house if we use the current required. So it's the last one of those three images. That shows you how close the barn would be to the main house if we had to use that 100-foot setback.
Too close.
Too close, yeah.
I guess I wondered, how much bed do you have? Is there a minimum of?
12, we have 12 acres.
That's hopeful. I have a question and thank you for providing the references. I mean, to search them for all others is difficult sometimes. So as I understand it, you want the Hobby Farm designation, which includes the setbacks which you need in order to get this barn on leveler property and not be an issue with the manure and closeness to your private residence, primary residence.
Correct.
Is there any issue with sanitation? As long as we're talking about manure. There's some, some writing in the Hobby Farm designation about stacking the manure and getting rid of it. You might have up to 10 animals. What's your plan on that?
Our plan for that right now is to do dumpster removal. We already have a dumpster that we utilize on the property and we will just utilize that for manure removal.
Hauling off.
Hauling off.
Yeah. I have a horse and it's amazing how much.
What, do you use it, are you growing your own hair or anything this, or?
Oh, no, no. We don't have any crap. So our land, one of the reasons why it's C2 in the middle of all that agriculture is because it's very rocky. So it's not the best land for growing things and we have, a lot of it is wooded and, you know, a lot of roll to the land. So we have a very small area that is kind of level.
The well, any problem on placement in relationship to the new barn?
Not with that setback, but if we had to follow the 100-foot setback, the well is actually almost right in between the barn and the house.
Okay. So you keep going back to the setback, but you're not asking us for a setback variance?
No.
So you are planning on building it at 100 feet away from your house?
No, with the Hobby Farm conditional use, it just has the 35-foot setback in the side yard.
Got it, okay.
So I don't, I don't mean to make it sound like I'm looking for a variance, I'm looking for the Hobby Farm.
Right, and that's not what you're asking for, yeah, on the application, got it, okay.
I think the C2 zoning, through a conditional use process, you can adjust the setbacks similar to the applicant that was here earlier. So I, do you need, or do you need the Hobby Farm designation for anything else aside from the setbacks?
We don't, but in speaking to Darren, he said we absolutely have to have the approved Hobby Farm for the county to approve it.
So just one other question on the Hobby Farm. I read with interest the possibility of the county requesting a register of deed statement for you in terms of, you know, I'm referring to number of animals and acreage, are you prepared to do that?
Yes, we already have a lawyer that has contacted Darren and worked through whatever he needs to do for verbiage and so that will be filed once this is approved.
So it will be filed, that is the plan?
Yes, correct.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank, oh, we, okay, thanks. So under C2, Hobby Farm is, is a conditional use. It's not, you know, it's listed in the zoning code. So I thought I'd bring that up. Other discussion amongst commissioners on the agenda item?
I mean, I think if you're going to have a Hobby Farm on C2, it makes sense to have a Hobby Farm when you're surrounded by agricultural properties.
Right, right. And it sounds like the only reason it's C2 is because it's not real growable land, so. All right, at this point, I'd open it up to the audience, anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Anybody like to speak against the proposal? Okay, again, this one's a straight conditional use that's listed in the book, I'd take a motion on this.
I'll take a motion to accept the conditional use for 9402 Stone West, or Stone School Road, parcel number B830680004.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Miss Sucker.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a condition use, W1602 County Road J. Parcel number PA 18180001, Cash Bar Enterprises.
Hello, everyone. After meeting with the county, Kate Lynn and Darren, I have a couple little updates, so I can hand these out if that's okay for everyone. And this is basically what I submitted to the county this morning for the, eventually I gave you too much here, so that's that. I didn't prepare very well on this, I apologize. There you go. So essentially, what we're doing is this is a former Double D site and we're looking for a conditional use for a public assembly, outdoor sale of food and beverage. And the concept is basically it's an outdoor, you can call it a beer garden and food truck area. So according to the conditional use per the county, they said that you can have two food trucks allowed. And the bar would be a pre-manufactured 20 or 40-foot shipping container that they fully engineer. And it's basically a full-service bar with a cooler where they'll set, there's tappers, cocktails, everything that you'd see in a regular bar. So basically what we did when we looked at this is we're utilizing basically the footprint of where Double D's was. We're not disturbing any of the parking area or the front area. And basically what we'll have is a bunch of picnic tables out there with umbrellas. The couple changes that I would like to mention are, is we did put a small bandstand in for small live music. We've also did some more detailed calculations on the number of people, maximum number. I think it's 135 people would be the maximum number. This is going to basically be a family-friendly place, it's not going to be open late. We're proposing to basically be open from 11 o'clock to 10 p.m. It's going to be a seasonable thing from May to October in the winter. We have a place in Texas, so I'm gone and I don't want to deal with it. And basically what we do is we winterize everything, shut it down, and it's shut down for the next season. So there's a lot of information in there. Basically, it's almost like an outdoor, you know, future, the former Double D's is what it's gonna be. So, we'll plan to have rotating food trucks come in and out and so people can have different options as far as food. And, and then we'll keep the existing residents and I'll rent that out.
Questions yet? Go ahead.
I, this is intriguing. It's really interesting and unique in my mind, so I mean, this is, I thought, is this a drive-in? I'm not sure because of the, the area, but May through October, if this, if this is seasonal, wouldn't you want something for snow reveals?
Uh, no. I'm, I'm in Texas. I don't wanna deal with anything in the winter. I'm trying to be in the warm weather, weather.
Well, I was thinking about liability and like lighting at night and.
So.
Littering?
Yeah, during, during, obviously, this was a bar before. They have the same issues that you're bringing up. We're gonna have dumpsters there, just like Double, Double D's did. We'll have lighting in the summer, you know, at this time of the hour, I don't know what time it is, you know, it's light till nine o'clock, so our lighting is only gonna be till ten. And then we're shutting everything down. So, there is a lighting plan in the new plans that I've, I've submitted. Essentially, if you look at some of the photos in there of the picnic tables, you'll see those string lights that kinda go across. And they're very dim lights. It's not like, you know, you're in a Walmart parking lot. It's gonna be an intimate area where people can just sit back and relax and socialize and, you know, bring the community together.
No kitchen?
No kitchen for me, yeah. So, the food trucks are the ones, they abide by their obligations. I don't have to deal with cooking.
So, the food truck, do they paint their own truck there and park on a, a slab?
Yes, yeah, yeah, no. So, so the area will be a crushed limestone. There's not gonna be any pavement there. It'll all be crushed stone.
Okay.
And they'll drive up into their designated area. We'll have an electric and a water hookup, so they can have their water and electric. And then they have their own holding tank for their wastewater. So, we won't hear a generator, you know, going blaring loud if you're on the square or anything like that. It'll be nice and quiet. And the food trucks, yeah, they take care of their own.
So, then when you have food truck on, you're that's.
Yeah, that's their spot. Yeah, yeah, that would be the spot.
You'll have a permanent?
No, no permanent. It's all temporary, yeah. In fact, the shipping container, you can put it on wheels or you can put it on a forklift and move it away or whatever, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, so with the container, the barn, container barn?
Yes.
Is that? Is that, yeah, is that essentially a permanent structure that has a foundation and?
No, no, it's.
You can, you literally pick it up.
I can literally pick it up in one day and get it out of there. Yeah, so it's temporary, seasonal, yeah.
And then how about the second?
Yeah, so the sewer will go to the, the bar and we'll utilize the holding tank that was approved for the former Double D's development. So, yeah, we'll be working with that plumber to make sure that everything goes for that. But that's only really cleaning your glasses and, you know, the water from melting ice.
Yeah, but the bathroom will be going to that.
The bathroom will, yeah, the bathrooms will. So, we'll have four bathrooms. They're also made in a shipping container, totally A V A compliant.
Wheelchair accessible?
Wheelchair access, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so, but they, these things are really popular. They're going up all over the place. There's one, Zocalo in Milwaukee, in Dallas, where, where we have a place. There's like two or three of them. There's Charleston, South Carolina. They're just, a lot of people like these places to go and hang out and have some food and a beverage.
At the onset, I think you said that Double D's, it's B three to B three.
Yes, yes, so no shipping.
You referenced that the conditional use is taverns and bars and public assembly.
Yeah, and outdoor food and, and beverage is what they asked us to add.
Is that establishment serving food or beverage for consumption outside of principal structure?
Which, which? Yeah, yeah, because there's no seating inside a building. It's all outdoors.
Okay, and Mr. Chase, a pet peeve of mine, and it happens regularly with our board meetings, and I'm sorry to make you look a front of this, but to get this amount of material without having a chance to read it or synthesize it, I think warrants no decision being made.
Agreed.
I agree.
It's, the one point I would make is the only things that changed were the bandstand and more detail on the parking and stuff like that. None of the other things really changed.
I've noticed, cause I went out there and, and sat and thought about this using your pictures from your previous model, I did notice there's been significant ground disturbances.
Yeah.
Especially around the new, or the old existing residences, and that's where the old building was. I'm guessing there was some sort of a subflooring in there. So, has there been any soil testing, any, any?
Uh, that's in process.
Research of that?
Yeah, yeah, phase one, phase two.
When do you think we'll hear that?
Probably two to three weeks.
Next meeting perhaps?
Uh, probably not, but I'm not gonna buy the thing if there's any contamination.
Yeah, that's, for your sake, I'm asking.
Yeah, so I, so my experience is I'm a real estate developer. I've, I own three hundred apartment units, I own multiple warehouses, shopping centers, so. I've been through the deal, deal and drill and I built the Point Apartments in Milan ago, so.
Uh, what line protections, any, anything to add?
No, nothing, everything is pervious soil, so we're not really distorting anything. The parking lot is already there. All we're gonna do is seal and stripe that parking lot. The front concrete area that's there is gonna still be there. So, it's really the area that they disturb when they demolish the building. Or do you have anything else to add?
But it's gonna be about eight, eight thousand five hundred square feet of moving, some third of them leveling it off a little bit, but that's like, like.
But to be honest, it'll probably be less impervious because there's no building there anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Something like eighty-five by a hundred.
Sure.
It looks like a big map that had, had ten scale.
Sure.
So, where's the bandstand? I can't see.
So, bandstand is this right here where the game area is. So, this is like, for like a cornhole or giant thing, so on.
This, this area.
That font's too small for that.
Everything is kind of enclosed.
Yeah, so we have a.
Here, here's the right of way line J and here's the existing part.
Sorry, so while we're on this topic, so where is the bar?
The bar is just in the center, right here.
Oh, right here, yeah.
Okay, so that's a.
Yeah.
A forty foot container?
Yeah, so it's eight foot wide by forty feet. So, so I'm on the fence of whether I do a forty foot or a twenty foot. So, I changed it to forty foot just to be safe. And then I can always downsize it to twenty feet if warranted.
Okay, so, so I think a lot of the material previously.
Yes, yeah, I did change that in the new one that I just sent. I said twenty or forty by eight, yeah.
I guess that with this, I'm concerned about the fencing. Where's that fencing gonna be?
It's around.
It's basically around the whole thing.
Okay.
So, there's, there's an entry point here, there's a sliding gate here, and then there's another gate there.
Okay.
There's a gate here and a gate.
It's four foot decorative fencing.
Okay, cause when you lock it up, come, when you leave in October, you know, will that be an attraction for kids to jump over the fence and just hang out there? And then again, too, will this be a teenage hangout? That there'll be issues with driving, like?
First of all, no. And every property that I have, I put a lot of security cameras on, have motion sensing, and I'll actually have cameras that have license plate recognition going into the parking lot.
Can you make sure you include that?
So, yeah, so that's something I do on all of my things, just to, because I have so many properties in different areas that I can't be there all the time, so.
Uh, just a question on conditional uses again. A permitted conditional use for B three is off-season storage and mini warehouse facility? Do you have any intention of on tune boats?
No.
Trucks, any period?
Nope, nope.
Take your word on that one?
Yeah, nothing.
So, you know, the, the traditional bar restaurant, you know, you, you, you have clientele there twenty-one and up. Yeah. You need some kids with, you know, parents and things after they're fishing at a location like that. So, how do you, how do you control who you're serving and, and where the drinks are going in an open air environment like this?
Well, same as any other bartender, you have to have certain licenses and you have to check I D's and go through all that process. One of the things that I wanna do is there's an app that you actually open your tab with an app and you get a copy of their driver's license. So, that's how they open the tabs. So, I mean, you just have to police it just like any other bar polices. You know, polices their, you know, underage or whatever drinking. I mean, I think that you're gonna see more people come there, like, for example, Fourth of July holiday week, you're gonna see people from the lake come with their families. They're gonna wanna get some food. There's only one option, Lulubells, and people are dying to have mother or more options for food and sit down and have a, have a drink. And I don't think this is gonna be someplace where they're gonna be like wild parties or anything like that. Uh, it's more sit down, you know, chat and, and enjoy the day and be outside.
And then I didn't see anything with regard to the, let you, let's see, I think it's sheet three in your packet. See the deeded access on the lake?
Yes.
Are you going to do anything different?
Nothing, nothing different from what Double D's had. So, there's two peers there that are, it's governed by the Lake Buella Management District and we have certain rights to have access. And patrons can come on, tie up to the lake and walk over. So, the one thing I would like to do is maybe be able to talk to the county if we could put a sign, you know, slow down or whatever during the summer hours. I don't know if Double D's did that or not, but it's the same situation that Double D's have back when, you know, they were open.
So, would you anticipate?
Liquor licenses or?
Yeah, we would go for the full class A liquor license, so it'd be cocktails, wine, beer, sodas, yeah.
Would you anticipate eating and drinking to be limited into that fenced area?
Yes, yes.
Or would it extend?
No, just the fenced area.
Back to the.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Well, just, you said games, so would you not include swing sets for the kids or would that be?
Uh, it's a possibility, possibility, yeah. The other thing that I'd like to do, so the county asked, well, how many events are you gonna have? So, so I said, you know, we'd like to have live music. We'd like to have maybe, I don't know if you've heard of these makers markets where kind of people like make their jewelry and whatever and they can set up in the game area. And the county said, well, how many do you think you could do? Well, most of those tents are like eight by eights. So, you'd have, you know, maybe five or ten eight by eight tents where they have their jewelries or whatever they make for sale. So, we could do that as a compliment, you know, for people to come in and, you know, or, you know, like Hometown Sausage Kitchen could come in and sell their, you know, fresh produce or whatever.
Would that easy to like a farmer's market?
Yeah, kind of like a farmer's market, yeah, which I think would be really cool.
Go ahead. Just a question in terms of the parking?
Yes.
So, when we came tonight, the, the max was one thirty-five. In preparing for tonight's meeting, it was one sixty, so it's gone down slightly. I'm just thinking you've got fifty-one slots. Thirty-seven are standard, twelve are motorcycles, two are handicap. But the document also says forty-seven, so is it fifty-one, forty-seven? How many slots do you have?
The, the parking is, it's made up of, the county rule is that parking for motorcycles, you gotta use the same hundred and eighty square feet of area for three people. So, that's how the determination was made. I encompassed handicap for, for the motorcycles in one space that was mixed together. That's why it was, the back area is, that's what's right on there. The standards, the ten, standard spaces was thirty-seven in the back.
Yes.
And, and then two handicap spots on the front.
And twelve motorcycles.
Twelve motorcycles spaces. And then the twelve motorcycle spaces, it's basically three people per hun- hundred and eighty square feet. And that's about one and a half persons per motorcycle and that's how the hundred and thirty-five were, was determined. Originally, it was estimated as more than that because we thought that was more parking than, than that. The county said, no, we wanna limit the motorcycle areas to just one, just one and a half per space or at least three people per hundred and eighty square feet.
So, my concern is if only one person comes in the vehicle, I mean, you could be in a situation where you're under capacity, grossly under capacity inside the fenced area, but your parking is full. So, is there an overflow parking plan or are you planning to be on J or the residential neighbors?
No, no, you can't park on J.
Think it won't happen?
You can't park on J and, you know, you always do a maximum capacity.
Right.
Chances are, I, I, I don't see a time when you're gonna see a hundred and thirty-five people in there ever. I, I just don't see it.
There's.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you never know because, you know, these motorcycle groups like to do weekends or whatever and they come in groups, friends of two hundred.
What's, what's the parking calculation per the code warrant, do you know? What's required?
Based on the area that we have, it's a hundred and thirty-five.
Parking spots?
No, a hundred and thirty-five people.
Correct, but how, what does that translate per code, one thirty-five capacity to parking?
Or something.
Cause it's not one, what's a one?
That's three, three per parking spot.
So, you're in compliance?
That's what's allowed.
Right.
And that's why we came down to a hundred and sixty. That was estimated originally. It was, I think, a no problem here or somewhere.
Sure.
Uh-huh.
To be in compliance with the parking lot?
Yes.
Sure.
Parking allows for, with that coverage, a hundred and thirty-five people a park doesn't mean that you're limited to a hundred and thirty-five people eating and drinking at the premise. It's just a calculation.
Yeah.
But that is your capacity and you've raised your capacity.
Yes.
That's what you're telling us, one thirty-five based on parking.
Yeah, I mean, we tried to do this, so there's no variances, we're, you know, the conditional use of.
I don't know, would there be a time where there are a hundred and forty-five? Sure, I suppose, or something, you know, but, but in general, that's would be the average.
And then that existing residence, somebody lives there?
Uh, it'll be rented. There's someone lives there now and it's currently being rented.
And they know about this plan?
Yeah, and also Jim Butler, who lives right next door, he signed a letter, uh, fully supporting it.
Just a question, and this does differ from what we prepared in the packet here in terms of lake access. So, there was no lake access, but now you're, have you?
No, there's always been lake access.
The, the, the allowance is through the agreement with the, the management district for Lake Buella?
Yeah, and that's.
Are you in communication with them?
Yes, yeah.
You have an agreement with them?
Dave Bitters is the president and I went and met with him and his wife a couple days ago at their house. And I'm going to be presenting at their next meeting. I've also talked to the Lake Buella Improvement Association, Deborah Dunn.
Yes.
Uh, and I'm gonna be at their next meeting. There was a Facebook post on the inform citizens page that was posted and I think we got seventy-two people that supported it and no, no one didn't. So, I've talked to a bunch of people on the lake this weekend and overwhelming support, you know, from the public.
So, it's having that assurance, I guess, is it a written agreement then with the management?
I think it goes with the property.
Yeah, it's, it's on the title.
Mm-hmm.
So, I can't change it unless I get Lake Buella Management's, you know, permission.
So, is the deed exit, is it, is that a separate parcel?
They own that parcel. So, they own the parcel and then the parcel to the back here, they actually own a parcel here and then there's a thirty-foot easement here. So, this dotted line is that thirty-foot easement, so our parking is not interrupting their easement at all.
And then, so, so the parcels near the lake, that's, that's for use? Is that deeded in a way where it's, it's to be used by that?
Yeah, so the, the way it's written, it basically says that we can have two peers. I can have my personal vote there and then the other peer can be used for patrons. It's a, it was a ninety-year ground lease for a dollar a year and then there's like sixty-five years remaining on the lease.
Any other? I do have, I reiterate some of what Commissioner Jerry mentioned in terms of lights, noise, now entertainment. I think the neighborhood needs to support this. I'm, I'm sure inform citizens, and I don't doubt that seventy-two people want this. I think we, we need places to congregate and enjoy the brief summer that we have. But I do, would have concerns in terms of music in particular. Double D's used to do a Labor Day band, band show. But, um, um, I do, would have concerns in terms of, uh, music in particular. Double D's used to do a Labor Day, um, band, band shell. And, um, I live two miles down the road, and I enjoy the music. Uh, and I think if that's gonna be a regular event, those less than two miles may not enjoy the music.
Yeah, and, well, I didn't control that. Yeah, we can control that, and I, I really envisioned more smaller, you know, acoustic jazz, you know, just background music. The people today don't want the loud rock and roll crazy music. I'm not doing this for a biker bar. This is more for, you know, lake people. I have a place on Lakeviewla, and I wanna go to a place like this.
Who, who will manage it? I mean, how many layers?
Uh, so I, so, so I will manage it, and I'll hire a bar manager, and we'll have staff.
How much staff do you think you'll have?
Well, uh, given today's world when no one wants to work, we'll probably have to have sixteen to eighteen people, but on any given day, it's probably two to four people. Because we're not, you know, doing the food trucks. The food trucks have their own staff, so I'm only in charge of the bar and the area.
The food trucks are licensed by the, I'm guessing the state of Wisconsin?
Yes, yeah, they have their own licensing and, and they have to.
Make sure they're licensed.
Yeah, we'll just make sure that they're compliant with all their.
The fire pits you're proposing have me concerned in terms of.
Probably not gonna do that at all. That can be an X. Uh, that's not a big issue.
Pet friendly? Uh, what is a pet?
So, uh, so, like, in Texas, for example, they allow pets on a six-foot leash, so it's a dog or a cat or, you know, that, ba- basically that. But management reserves the right to, if there's an unruly pet, to ask them to leave right away.
Will you have baggies for the doggy poop?
Uh, we will have baggies. We'll have, uh, a cooler with water and bowls for the dogs.
Pet area to relieve themselves?
Uh, no, they'll have to, that's, there's really not a pet area. They're gonna have to, you know.
I think there's more of a management thing for him. I don't know that we need to be concerned about where he's gonna pick up his dog poop.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that the owners should be taking care of, and if, if one ever had their dog poop there and they didn't take care of it, I'd be saying, you're not allowed to come back ever again.
Sure.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
You said this is in other states, what, and you've talked to these other people that have done this venue in other states, what problems have they encountered that we haven't asked you at this point?
Uh, you know, not, I don't know of any, to be honest with you. In fact, I was at one last week. I, I can show you this video on my phone. I wish I had a projector to show you, but, um, it's nice and quiet, and this was at nine o'clock at night.
You're only open till ten.
Huh? Yeah, we're only open till ten.
So, therapy is louder, so the noise is gone.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be, you know, strict on, you know, ten and we're done, but, um, if I can. This is, if you wanna see what this is like.
Well, it's kind of action, huh?
Yeah. It's just kind of like background noise. You don't even, you know, it's not loud.
Did we inform everyone with the new rule of rules on no responses?
We'll, we'll find out when I ask the audience.
But they were informed. Um, I can personally say, in previous profession, that I, I've dealt with food trucks, and I've found them to be problematic, but manageable in terms of, um, licensing and, and proper care, which your manager could easily handle, as well as these, um, structures. I mean, they're, they're very trendy, and they're not going away, and they're, they're nice. They're very usable.
And in the garbage containers?
Yeah, we'll have garbage containers, and we'll take it to the dumpster and have regular service.
And, and, and cleaning up?
Say you're gonna rotate trucks, so there's gonna be different cuisine?
Yeah, different trucks, and if, if, if one is there and we have issues with them, they won't be invited back. It's, you know, the challenge in Wisconsin is a lot of people that own food trucks have day jobs, and they do that on the weekends. So the challenge is gonna be finding food trucks to be working on, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So that's gonna be my hardest thing to find.
Would you project, if this were passed, when would this be?
Uh, it would be, uh.
Late time?
Basically, next May, it would open.
That's your target, huh?
Yeah, so.
It's a lot to accomplish.
Yeah, so the food trucks, it takes about six to eight weeks to build a food truck. So, uh, and the grading shouldn't be that big of a project. So, I built, I built eighty-seven apartment units in twelve months, so I think I can do this.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Uh, discussion, I mean, i- if we're gonna come back, I mean, we can always have discussion now amongst commissioners. We can have, obviously, one before we take our vote in two weeks. Uh, but if there's any discussion, I'd have it now, otherwise I'd open it up to the audience.
I think, I think probably coming back in a couple weeks, it would be nice to get.
Digest it, the new information.
To get what the applicants are asking for clarified a little bit, there's some, there's a number of conflicts between the documents, just that we got that in front of us, and it's.
Certainly.
Yeah, and I have full-size plans here that you can have. So, you know, if you, and basically what I sent today is what we're going for. There shouldn't be any more changes.
Full-size, that's just your first?
Yeah, I, right here.
He has full size of the, of the new handouts.
Yeah, yeah, you can read it better. Yeah, so you can read, you can read it better.
Are they just, uh, good to open it up to the audience, or, or do we still wanna have discussion amongst ourselves? Cause like I said, I know that we're all kinda tempted to digest it. Obviously, there can be discussion when we come back as well.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I mention that because it's just, there's a lot to look at, so it's, it would be nice to be very clear on exactly what you're looking for us to add on. There's, there's a lot in here.
So.
Bullet means maybe?
Yeah, I suppose, I mean, if you wanted to recap it, I mean, it, it's, it's a conditional use. I, I, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know that we have to be that concerned. He shows sixteen picnic tables. If there's seventeen there, I, I don't know that I'm that concerned about it. Uh, you know, it's, it, yeah, right, capacity hours operation, were kinda my big things. Um, you know, he's showing us one bar. If now there's five bar, you know, obviously, he's given us, you know, a, a pretty good layout, I, I think, you know. And Warren's done, you know, it's, it's got topography, it's got setbacks, it's got parking, you know, so, um, not, not to poo-poo what you're saying, I just, by all means, let's, let's digest it over two weeks.
There, there are a couple things that came up, like, so are we looking for fire pits or not?
No fire pits.
So then, you know, you know, we'll know, like, have that noted?
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind just maybe doing a recap of kinda the things we talked about, cause some things like, well, this is in, but then it's not in, you know?
Yeah, so, so basically, it's conditional use with public assembly, outdoor food and beverage. Uh, I don't know the terminology, so I think I put a bar, you know, bar and, and food. No fire pits whatsoever, uh.
Would you mind just recapping that and emailing it to Jen?
Oh, yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I, I would like, and then, uh, I'd like clarification around where, where the, the food and alcohol is going to be, like, if, if it's going to be limited in the, this, this.
Yeah, it's within the fence area.
I didn't see that written down.
Okay, I, I, I just thought it was a given, so I can, we can make note of that, but, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And you said how many food vendors did you want?
Uh, well, two food trucks are allowed per, per the conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah, at any given time. So there may be one or maybe two, but no more than two.
How would you promote that? I mean, if you own returned customers, and you're having different.
Well, we, we don't have to really go over his, his marketing plan.
I'm, I'm curious.
Yep, no problem.
Go to the Zoccolo, uh, Facebook page, and that'll help you out.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Uh, would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Go ahead, Jen.
My name is Andrew Smolost.
Please.
Uh, John Stos, uh, North AD eight thirty-one Sterling Springs Bridge Road. Um, I've been in the community here on Lakeviewla, uh, for about fifty-five years. And, uh, I've worked at almost all the places on the lake except for Double D's. That's the one place I didn't work. Um, but I've worked at all of them, and, uh, family has owned some, and I own a small business on the lake right now. Uh, right now, our town has afforded eight liquor licenses. You get one liquor license per five hundred occupants of your town. And we're running a deficit in places that people that live in the town of East Troy can go to the town of East Troy, and enjoy some libation, meet their neighbors, and relax and have a good time. Uh, I think what, uh, the proposal here is gonna be, uh, a very good asset to the lake. Uh, right now, we have one, uh, bar on the lake, and it's, uh, very busy over there, and it'd be nice to see another place on the lake where people could come, meet neighbors, could meet, um, people that live out of state, that own property here, can come and enjoy themselves and meet their neighbors. Um, I think it's a good idea, and I hope the little bugs can be worked out, and something positive can come out of the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? Okay, well, we'll digest this, and we'll come back in two weeks and have a discussion and a vote. All right.
Um, so we, we're on the, the county for the seventeenth, so we should be okay still, right? Uh, not delaying.
No, because that's gonna ha- it still has to go to the town board.
Yeah, so if it's two weeks, we're.
Second Monday in August, town board.
Okay, so we should be fine then, because if it's the seventeenth.
It's the seventeenth of August.
Seventeenth of August.
Oh, yes, that, that won't be a problem.
I'm just trying to figure it out, because of due diligence timing and.
Understood.
If I need to extend my due diligence.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there any other public comments? Any other business amongst commissioners? I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Seconded, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, or adjourned. Thank you.
Mind a full-size copy of the?
I would like it, please. Thank you.